Hey everybody, I'm giving you an update. Uh, this video is uh, we have a public hearing in Angelina County on um, the ninth at ten o'clock in Commissioner's courtroom. Um, after all my research and whole nine yards, um, I'm gonna actually go um, and address Commissioner's meeting. Uh, I'm sure there'll be uh, I'm sure there'll be multiple sheriffs there waiting for me to make some kind of mistake, but the reason for my uh, my presence at Commissioner's meeting is number one, is that the open meeting is for the uh, for the creation of precinct one. And we have also have a precinct two now, so we're gonna have two precincts. Now this this item, okay, that's gonna be discussed, discussed by uh, the Commissioners and the public. Um, basically, here's how it violates um, and this the law they're ready to pass to create precinct one, it affects all his residences because it affects, it adds another precinct, which basically will basically it's going to actually increase to input other individuals in power. Um, and that's basically what it is. Now I'll break it down to you because precinct one and just the precinct two, the public hearing will be held at ten PM, okay? Um, and I have to do this within three minutes because they're really particular because they don't want you to be up there too long. But precincts one and precinct two, they also highlight a deeper issue and what I'm trying to say is it continues to undermine public confidence and a persistent pattern of decision-making without transparency, accountability, or public trust. Now let me show you how this does, just the piece boundaries are not just lines on the map. They determine who represents some of the most sensitive matters. I mean, we're talking about it, uh, county government. They influence workload distribution, they uh, election outcomes, uh, judicial accessibility and and the overall, um, all these precincts, they uh, create a fairness in our justice system, uh, because these changes have a long-term consequences. We're gonna make a precinct one, but these these decisions are gonna have, the decisions that somebody makes when they come into the precinct one and precinct two, they're gonna um, they're gonna have a pretty good impact. But they must be handled in complete openness and this hearing uh, needs to, they needed to describe um, all the details of this uh, of the minutes of the discussion and um, they need to be open with this um, with these items because it's in general public need. Basically, we want to be comparative, it's for insider influence, is it for maneuvering individuals? Um, those are the political, those are the political aspects of this. So that's why we need complete openness. Yet today, we can consider these uh, revisions, we again, seeing the involvement of the retired county attorney, Kerry Kirby, who comes up and states uh, that he don't know his, I'm quoting him, but he was saying to something of this effect that he doesn't know why or what happened, but they did away with precinct one and we have no, we have no explanation why that we did away with that, or one of the Commissioners, or one of the precinct one and two representatives. So they did away with the position. So, why is Kerry Kirby talking? He's retired. Why is he even having any input into county Commissioners' decision? And if he gets up to actually speak, how come he's not limited to three minutes also? His continued presence in county business without a clear disclosure of what his job title is, how much are we paying him and what legal authority does he have? Now they might say, well, he doesn't have any legal authority, he just got up there and spoke. No, you had him on the agenda, you asked him to come in and it cut the knees off of our county attorney who's actually, it cuts our knees off because if they don't like the county attorney's decision and they don't like his reasoning, then just say, well, go get Kerry Kirby, he'll agree with us. So who's he advising? And who authorized it? Who authorized the human data? He said, come in and shape policy, policy. I don't, I, I, Kerry Kirby um, in his time, in his time, um, he was definitely a proponent for the Commissioner's Court. He always agreed whichever way the court wanted to go. Um, and I'm, I'm not saying um, that he was either, you know, that his rulings were incorrect or whatever. What I am saying is, is that now what is, what are you doing? What are you doing? If you want to speak to us in a legal capacity, how much are we paying you? So in other words, if you're getting up there to sell us on an idea and they're paying you for it, they're paying for your, they just paid for your opinion because they know it's gonna go their way. Now, the, the court, they actually have um, public information back and basic principles of good governments ensure that the public, they understand who's influencing these decisions. So in other words, here, we've got Kerry Kirby who's influencing a decision and transparency is not an option. Transparency is not an option because the fact is, it's not what they determine they're gonna release. It's determined by the law and what they have to release. I just found out today, just got the answer back from the Attorney General. They sent a letter, I posted it on my page, I'll probably post it again, but the Attorney General came back and addressed Nick Gardner because another one to name to the list, Wendy Cabrera, Wendy Cabrera. She died in Angelina County Jail back in 2021. There's no CD, CD on our report on AG's record. There is no details, no information relating to this. Matter of fact, when I say her name, you're like, who the hell is that? That's just another one on the list that they covered up, or they didn't give the full details. And they not only did it to the people, but they did it to the Attorney General. This information right here is what spurred Angelina County, I mean, Attorney General into looking in Angelina County. Because they have multiple essence of pattern of behavior that is against uh, it's against, we're talking about criminal cases now. Because they knew and they, they did it on purpose, they put it in place. They continually disclose, they can continue to hide um, key related any, key related issues to any county of business or operations, are missing or withheld jail reports, delayed responses, the legal opinions used in public access. To an agenda legally advisors appearing, why, explanation, why are you here? This history matters here today because it makes a resident's question whether these precinct boundaries are on the up and up. Are they designed for the public need? Or are they simply to do who do not answer to the, the public? So they're gonna place people in those positions that they, the county residents didn't, they don't get to vote on, they just, they just appoint them. So this is how it works. They get the positions, people in the positions that are on, that are off the radar of the people, of the residents, and that's where they presume they walk on water. So I'm, I'm gonna be asking for this, a full disclosure of, of the, the, the method um, was actually, how was this drawn? How did you draw this? What basis? I wanna know the details of how you came to the, came to realization, we needed another uh, we need another precinct. One, and we needed one or two, I'm gonna add that precinct, how, who made that decision? And was it for political? For political reasons or did it actually benefit the public? And the question of legal, legal counsel being hailed by somebody who's not in office anymore. If I was a county attorney, I would be pissed. I would be pissed because of the fact that, you know, you just cut my knees out from my, you just took away all my authority. So you just told me if I don't agree with you or I have a legal opinion that's against what you want it to be, we'll just get another attorney in there. And I wanna know, I wanna know everything, why he's involved in the legal and this process anyway. Who invited him? Under what authority is he acting? How can he act as, as an attorney or give advice as attorney when he's not actually in the office? He basically described, I don't know how it got, it was, we had one and then we didn't have one. Okay, well, we need to reason why we don't have one anymore. I don't know. I don't know what it was. Don't I think, don't you think that it might be an important piece of information, why we, why we get away with it? And don't you think it may be the public needs that we were there? Does he meet all transparency requirements? I mean, does he, does, is he, does he follow any trauma? Uh, does he throw, uh, is tipa? Does he follow in the guidelines of being able to influence these decision-makers? And then, on what authority? Now, that no, the determination that no precinct boundary revisions would be finalized until the public had received complete documentation in adequate time to evaluate. So in other words, you're gonna complain, you're gonna add a precinct, then give me all the information. Transparency is not optional. I need to know what you're doing. Unfortunately, our Commissioners don't understand this. I need to know what you're doing, how are you doing it, how much you're spending, where it went. And if you're covering this up, then you're violation of the law. And these laws, it depends on, the seriousness depends upon not only the act, but how often you've done it. And we have a clear pattern. Not in just these issues that I've been speaking of, but it's developing into a real pattern. And there's more people actually looking. We've actually had state agencies who are looking into this and now it's gone national. So now for counties who don't like people in their business, guess what? They're gonna be all in the business and they're gonna be naming who, they're, they're gonna be asking questions to everybody who might or might not be involved. So if you're in the county and you're in the county office and you're working for the county, don't be surprised, people say, did you know about this? When did you know about this? Did you know what was going on? Why didn't you say something? Because it determines if you're an accomplice or not. By you staying silent, not bringing it to someone's attention, you committed a crime right there. And people don't even seem to understand that because the umbrella of Angelina County has always protected him. And once they protect you, then you owe, you owe the county something, so it's like tit for tat. That's how it works. But this decision must be transparent and it should be above reproach. I mean, it should be, it should be broken down like a shotgun and they have explained to young kids, third and fourth grade kids, fifth grade, so they understand. But it's not. And it continued, but it's not. And we're gonna get away with it. Why can we get away with it? Because the fact is, here's one point, we schedule Commissioners' meetings at ten o'clock during a weekday. We don't get it. Okay, seventy-two hours of notice on the open meeting. And it's proven by the OG, the AG, the AG has written letters to Angelina County. They mean these violations. And yet, they still they still go unnoticed and that's created a pattern with AG does it, they won't, they won't clap down, they'll give us warning and slap us on the wrist. Well, the slapping of wrists is over, bro. Because now you got five deaths in a jail that you withheld the information on. Five deaths. Some you didn't even release, some you didn't even release a report to the AG, okay? Which is required within seventy-two hours of death. You didn't even respond to the AG until six months later. This is the letter that I'm getting ready to post from the AG. I think I've already posted it. The period. They just figured that the, that the Attorney General would forget about this. Would forget about this, but once the AG and OIG has actually seen documentation, well, this creates a pattern, I had to show it to them in front of their face and they're like, oh shit, we got a problem. So it's not the fact is, what the fact is, is that they're covering up information that we have, we should have total access. We should have total access to um, to every government process that we have and there should be no, there should not be, not be, made any decisions behind closed doors. We can see that trend because the fact is, guess what? When you go out, when you look at the Commissioners' meeting, even if you run it on tape, all votes are unanimous. That means they discussed it before. An open quorum, basically, this is the one of the, one of the common examples. You got two Commissioners here, they communicate with two Commissioners here, okay? And then they come, they present their, they present their opinions to the judge. Okay, but the judge already knows the outcome because he has instructed them. He's instructed them on, on how to vote, well, why we need it, whatever, it's behind closed doors. No, you should have it discussed in front of people. So our Commissioners that you've elected and you put in office, they're useless. They're just pawns who put forth a formality to actually come on uh, to, to, to make the appearance that they're actually following the, following the laws, rules, and regulations of the state of Texas on having, you know, having open meetings and Commissioners' meetings. When really the real decisions are made behind our back. Or in this case, underneath the cover by illegal individuals who are actually getting up and creating a damn good report, just like they wanted to do that. I'll give you a case in point. Judge Limberly was there. Dressed in the Commissioner's court, kind of pretty casual. I mean, you didn't have to wear a suit, you didn't have to wear a tie, you didn't have to do anything. But here's, when Keith Wright took over, he mandatorily told everybody, you gotta, you got to wear a suit and tie. If you do not wear a suit and tie, then that's reflection on our government and the appearance is more than matters than anything else. I would love to hear that conversation with somebody, with, with one of our Commissioners, because it was done. We didn't know about it, never was addressed. Basically, I'm gonna get up because the fact is, is that somebody's gotta call bullshit. Somebody's gotta let them know that they're watching. I have tried, I have researched it, now I got five, Wendy Cabrera, uh, dead, I'd heard about it, but I consumed, I considered it on the up and up. However, the question is, I got the email back from the AG today and it shows me where Nick Gardner was. Was, they followed up with Nick Gardner. And one of us said, oh, okay, I gotta do the report. How do I do that? How do I contact and how do I do that? Like training. We got personnel aren't making decisions that we don't know what the hell they're doing, they haven't been trained because the fact is, is that they do not have their own mindset. They act upon the Commissioners and what the Commissioners tell them to do and what the Commissioners tell them to do only. They gotta run it by the Commissioners. So you gotta run everything by your Commissioners to make your own decision. Gotta make sure everybody agrees with you because you don't want, hey, you don't agree with somebody, it may cost you votes. Worse than that, what kind of drug deal you made on the side, you know, well, I'll get you that contract. We saw that. We saw that in the road, when our road Commissioner made, gave his contract to one of his best friends. They didn't even open any other contracts. So, basically, this is this is the item that should be addressed, it's open meeting, just exactly simply for there. I don't know if there's anybody gonna show up for, yes, it doesn't really matter. Here's what matters. It's because what they don't understand and what people don't understand is that when you appear in the Commissioners' Court, it goes on record. Okay, it goes on record because you got a film up there showing you there. And it goes in record on the agenda and I'm sorry, on the minutes. So you have documentation where you can prove to the AG, I addressed the situation, oh, here it is, and then you can print it to the, present it to the AG, OIG, Texas Rangers. And DOJ. Trust me, DOJ knows all about this. And when AG, when they actually start, and which I guess they already have, but when the DOJ starts investigating AG, then it gets AG's attention. And basically the question is, what's going on here, what's going on in Angelina County? And trust me, on the race of information or transparency, we, we don't have a very good record. We just put, we just charged one, we just charged one. Judge Limberly. Failing to perform his duties as far as the Texas Information Act. So for those of you thinking, well, that ain't no big deal, they don't put another precinct, blah, 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 yeah. You're right. Don't pay attention. But don't, don't bitch and whine and complain whenever your taxes go up because they did it illegally. Now they gotta cover the legal costs. No one has actually even questioned. We got Flowers and Davis, an outside company that we're paying, I know, at least two hundred and fifty, three hundred dollars an hour to cover up. Smallwood and Irvin. Let's not forget about Ms. Hartman. Stolick, Smallwood, Irvin. And if you look at the chain of events, it's every year, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. Every year, the people have, should have been aware of this. And I can't believe this. We've got five deaths, the information was withheld from the public. Then they pass an extension bill, which is another sixteen million dollars onto a jail extension. Before we actually do a jail extension, shouldn't you address the issues that people keep dying in that jail? And if you're gonna add more people to that, what, what percentage of people are gonna die now? Final address. Right now, if you look at, if you look at county, uh, Angelina County arrests or whatever, uh, women being arrested is, is unreasonably high. Or what it, it's just more than what it used to be. And these are charges like uh, no driver's license, uh, expired insurance, these things or whatever. But see, what that does is, is that beefs up, that, that beefs up the Sheriff's Department, look, look how many arrests we had or whatever. Public intoxication, you know, all these kind of things. If they insist on being reported to keep the jail full, so they keep the money flow there. But the fact of the matter is, now we have more women. And my point here is that if you have more women in a jail, there is a higher possibility of them dying. We have two out of the five who are females. Two out of the five. So there's no prejudice in the jail, I guess. Between male and female, you know? You die, you die, I don't give a shit who you are. And basically, that is actually the, the mindset that we have been growing accustomed to. At, you know, well, this is the way we do things here in state of Texas, we're in Angelina County, we're different, we're better, whatever. But I'm telling you this right now, we're getting ready to find out that the AG, they don't give a shit what town you, wherever you from. If you're breaking the law, Texas state law, guess what, they're coming to get you. And if you don't keep up with the current laws, which they haven't kept up with the, the passage that we just had recently, I can't remember the bill, but anyway, it just passed, it was HB thirty among other things, that jail deaths are have to be disclosed, and jail deaths have to be, basic information has to be released, including videos, body cameras, videos, logs. Logs from the guards, how, how long were the, what, the time that they checked their let's not even check these images that they've got in detox cells, supposedly every fifteen minutes. Are we doctoring logbooks like we have been caught in the past? I don't know. But we need the information to find out. One death is, for me, too many. You got five from twenty-one to twenty-five, uh, twenty twenty-one to twenty-four, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five, you got five deaths and they haven't been explained, nobody has actually stood up. And nobody has even mentioned, not in the Commissioners' office, not in the Sheriff's Office, they have no comment. There are all these red flags that are, that people say, they can't do that, they can't, this is, okay, well, they can't because we let them. We let them get away with it because we don't question them. We do not want to be put on the skyline as a troublemaker or be gaslighted as a troublemaker. It's crazy, it's stupid, or whatever they think that we are in the Commissioners' Court. But the fact of the matter is, is that it's shown everywhere, decisions that they make. They take no consideration to the public's needs and they don't listen to the public, they do whatever the hell they want to do, whether we like it or not. And every year we go up in tax. Every year we get another fee or fine or something else that they add to it. We think it's money, where, where you think that money is going? We have no idea. Were the budget transfers from that, from that department, that part, that department, this department, that, hey, that's a lot of money lying there. I don't care, it's money laundering, plain and simple. Because when you move, move money from this account, this account, it's gotta be accounted for. If you move, it's gotta, you gotta follow the, you gotta follow the money. And in Angelina County, you can't do that. So I'm gonna go, I'm gonna speak at this, I'm, I'm, I'm on the fence, I don't know, um, if anybody sees the video, give me, give me, give me a thumbs up just to say that, you know, you should address this or give me thumbs down if you don't, tell me to shut up my mom and dad business or whatever. But my taxes and money comes out of my pocket, it's my business. Rules and regulations that are actually illegal that affect me and my freedoms and also other people's freedoms. They're a big deal, a big deal to me. We got forty-two percent of registered voters in Angelina County who actually go out and vote. Why is that? It's apathy because the fact is, everybody's got their mind, it's never gonna change. They've been around it so long, it's never gonna change. Key personnel, you have an officer keep changing over, they hire their own, they keep in the family, they hire their own kid. They hire their, their, their best friends, they hire people I went to college with, blah, 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 blah. So the pattern continues. And who pays the price? Well, we do because every year we've had a tax raise. And they can't justify the tax rate, they won't. So, give me thumbs up, give me thumbs down, uh, what do you think I should do? Should I go forward with it and go move forward with it? Or do you think maybe I should wait and just compile research evidence and deal behind the scenes and deal with the contacts that I currently have? I don't know what I should do, I don't know which way to go, I know that there's any justice done, but hell, there's been a justice has done since I started researching this stuff. So I'm actually, when's the time to pull the trigger on these people? All right, guys, thank you for, thank you for watching, thank you for, uh, if you liked the video, share it. If you don't, it's fine, I understand. I understand totally why you won't share it or you won't comment. That's because the fact is, you're feeling, you don't wanna get gaslighted. That's why, because the fact is, people who don't join the group, because they don't wanna have their name anywhere contacted with somebody who's exposing these wrongdoings. But, shit's gonna hit the fan whenever they start having to ask questions and it starts going down because I'm telling you this right now. Commissioners are gonna start passing the buck real quick and they're gonna start dropping dimes on people. They should have known, they should have known, they should have known, it wasn't my fault, them, whatever. Same thing. Same thing. They've done it all the time. The same way when the Commissioners meeting, Steve Smith, he ratted out the Commissioners because the fact is, they would give him immunity. And they wouldn't look at him anymore. They wouldn't look at his influence on the county road that was repaved in front of his house. So he, I'll drop the dime on all of this and I get immunity. But don't be, don't be twisted because the fact is, the county attorney and the district attorney right now, they are considered in the minds of government conflicted. So in other words, when they do bring, when they do bring uh, charges, both criminal and civil, then they're not, those people are, they're gonna have to hire a special prosecutor, they're gonna have to hire, they're gonna have to get a judge, a special prosecutor, the whole nine yards, we're gonna get this clean slate of people who do not, are not, are, are, do not represent the county. Because they've already acknowledged, they said they're conflicted. And then we see the path they're choosing, to stand by your man. So. That puts them on, that puts them on top of the witness list right there. Are they gonna be talked to? Thank you, guys, appreciate it, like and share, you know, have a good day, it's getting cold, put your coat on, I'm out.